Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 23, 2020 Board of Education Meeting. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the people which is one nation. And can we please have a motion to move out of executive session?
So moved.
I think that was Jan.
Dan and Sue.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, as an alteration to the agenda, we will be removing item nine and address at a later date. Can we have a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
Maria in second.
And Linda.
Linda, thanks. I know everybody's voice is all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board business, we have a Wonder Care update.
Yeah, and I'd like to take a moment to reintroduce you, Kristin Fenton and Erin Burns, the two co-directors, who are going to lead you on the way, give you a one-year update of how the program's gone. I'll jump in a little bit, but we're going to let them take it away. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation right now and go from there.
Thank you.
All right, could everybody see that? Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. Kristin and Erin, take it away.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us.
Hi.
Welcome.
So when Erin and I, Brian, you can move the slide. When Erin and I started this journey, January of 2019, which seems like a very long time ago, but really hasn't, we, our first order of business was to really make sure that we are going to run a high-quality program. That was very important to us. We wanted it to be, you know, quite honestly, the best. That's, we're from the business world a little bit, so we always want to be the best and the brightest, if you would say. So what we basically did was we came up with our Core Seven. And basically, those seven components guide everything our program does. It guides curriculum, lesson planning. It guides our coordinators into their, the way they're planning and programming. And you can see on the side that the seven components are literacy, growth with care, wellness, service learning, arts and humanities, STEM, and academic and homework support. So those have been a really guiding force for us. We use them a lot and we talk about them a lot with our people. And the second big part of, I think, the success that we had this year was our elective program. I think it's really important when children have a choice in what they get to do throughout their day at Wonder Care. The elective program, let them do that. So when we ran those programs, they got to choose what they wanted to participate in based off their interest, or maybe not their interest, but, and a lot of the elective programs were run by outside vendors or specialized staff who have that, you know, who are, I certainly couldn't run a karate class, but I could run a yoga one. But, you know, you did karate, arts, dance, magic, STEM. I mean, that's just kind of some of the basic things that we did, but we offered quite a bit to the kids. So that was kind of great. So our 2019 staff overview, so there's the two of us, Erin and Kristin. I oversee the Thomas Side Elementary Schools. Erin oversees the Schrader Side. We have one admin assistant. We have seven full-time coordinators, which I've been reflecting a lot in our little shutdown here about these seven people, and they really have, were truly a huge reason as to why we were so successful. They had the time and the energy, and they are in the childcare field. They have the background, and we were able to hire them full-time, and they were really, really incredibly helpful to us. We had 126 part-time staff, and then we had 38 teacher or school employees. So we had seven teacher coordinators who were at our sites. We had teacher aides, teacher assistants. We had food service workers, and we also had some of the school secretaries work for us in the afternoons.
So these are our numbers from September 2019 until unfortunately, March. So we were, we were a little sad we weren't able to finish our inaugural year of Wonder Care, but you can see these numbers, they reflected for a really great first, first year. So you'll see up top, those are AM numbers. So we do run a program in the morning from 6:30 until when the school bell rings. And you'll see that some of those numbers are a tad low, probably because parents can get their kids on the school bus, you know, because the earlier start time. So, you know, there's still some need for some kids to have morning care. And even though they were lower numbers, they still got, you know, a great program in the morning as well, including a hot breakfast, which was, which is great. And so that was something exciting. The PM numbers down below, Plank South is, was our largest site, is our largest site there. And then you can see that State is our lowest, but still, that's a, that's a great number for an after-school childcare. One of the cool things, too, that we kind of created along the way here is the opportunity for a four o'clock pickup. So something very different compared to other childcare centers and after-school programs, where kids, there's a discounted rate for those four o'clock, for somebody who can be picked up before four o'clock. So, so that was something, too, that we did a little bit different than everybody else. Go into the next.
What is the normal pickup time?
Good question. So we open, or we, the bell rings from after-school, depending on the school, and it goes until six o'clock. So six o'clock at night. The Wonder Days, so that was a cool term that we kind of came up with, which is for any days off. So that's superintendence, most holidays, and then the school break. So February recess, spring recess, Columbus Day, those type of days. So you can see to the, to the right there, Plank North and Clem North is what we run those programs out. So we combine to those two schools, just because there's not so much the need, as always, on those days for, for care off. So those are our numbers all the way through. Again, we weren't able to do spring break, although those numbers did look very similar to what February was, plus about 10 more each day. So we were really starting to gain momentum, so that was really exciting. One of the cool things, too, about Wonder Days that we do is we did some field trips. So we went to things like bowling, to movies, and then we also utilized the Webster Aquatic Center as well. So that was really cool getting out there on the, whatever they call that inflatable thing. Kristin, what is that, like Mount Billy?
Jungle Joe.
Jungle Joe. See, I was close, I was close, I was close, Jungle Joe. So the kids really liked that, and it was nice to be able to utilize something right in our community. So that was good.
So what we've learned in this first year, we've learned a lot of things, but the biggest thing was we changed our software platform that we use for registration. So when we came in here, we started to use Redworks, which we weren't a huge fan of. So we researched a bunch of different software programs, and we ended up going with a company called Easy Care. And basically, we're just trying to make the user registration experience better for the families, for us, for our staff. And we're really excited about it. It's during the shutdown, we've had a lot of time to be able to do webinars, and we've learned a lot about the backend of the system. And we kicked off 2020, 2021 registration on April 25 for current families. And then we opened it up to the public that Saturday. I can't remember what that was, May 2nd. Did not get any questions from parents on how to register. So we think that was a good telling sign that they were able to just go in on the link and register. And it was, it was a really seamless transition, quite honestly. So we're really, really excited about that. And the parents are going to be able to have Parent Portal that's really easy to use. And so we've already been able to give them directions and how to make payments in there. And so, and in February, we surveyed our families about summer program. Oh, please skip on. And really, we have, we found that there wasn't quite the need that we thought maybe that there would be. So we just kind of used those survey responses to decide not to do summer, is the point.
So in the future, if that were to change, would you just combine sites or have a limited number of sites? There were demand.
We'd probably operate it, you know, like we would our days off of school, you know, start small and then grow.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Question. So the budget process, so when formulating this, moving forward for the next, for the next school year, you know, we looked directly at like competitors and private specter, or sectors, and, and overall, we've decided to go with a 2% increase, which I think is pretty decent, considering, you know, that minimum wage is also going up as well. So putting all that into, to factor. So as we begin our planning for our needs for next year, what's great is, is that that first year, we didn't have any of our staples. We were starting right from scratch. So we didn't have crayons, we didn't have scissors, we didn't have kickballs, we didn't have parachutes. We didn't have, you know, anything. So a lot of our base needs are still going to be there, like those staples. So that's kind of cool, moving forward, being able to go into something where the, the, the site coordinator's going to know what they have there. So, so that's one thing that we took into account as well. And then also, like Kristin just talked about, the new changes in our software, in our software systems and stuff. And one of the other things, too, with, that, that we're, Kristin was talking about, too, with our electives, is getting more of the school staff and those specialties that be able to come in and teach, you know, little niches that they might have, whether they, you know, at Plank South, we had a teacher who was a really great crocheter, or maybe it was knitting. I don't know which one it was, but she was really great at it, and she came and she taught the kids. So getting more of those kind of things on, onboard with us as well. So, you know, that, that, those are the things that we looked at as we continued through planning our budget process.
Just to have a question, those extra activities, is that, that's all included, correct, in their, their tuition?
Correct.
Okay, so these kids were busy.
They, they were busy and it's.
Busy children are.
Are much. Great children, yes, we love that.
They are great when they are very busy.
Yeah.
The pictures that you, you posted on social, social media when, when we were in session were amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, great.
We really tried to make sure that we had a social media presence, but it was awesome because our people would just send us pictures every day. I'm like, oh, my goodness. I'm like, wow, these kids are busy. It's only 2:45, all right.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to take you through kind of some of the financials for the first year. Just give you how that landed. So obviously, we got to talk about the COVID impact. So, you know, we thought, we made a decision, Krista and Erin and I, when we were putting our heads together when, you know, everything was happening in March, you know, all right, what do we do? Because, you know, a lot of the other groups that run programs like this, you know, as we learned and started the process was, they had a hard, like, no refund policy. But we thought, you know, given the climate of everything that was going on, that it just made sense to do refunds to our families for the three months. So we ended up giving back about $60,000 in refund payments to families through the, those three months. We saw significant claims, which kind of hurt the bottom line a little bit, too, for Wonder Care, for the part-time staff that, in essence, were laid off. So when we talked about earlier about setting those financial targets, you kind of want, in that first year, we, we had some cushion because we wanted to build up the base. You know, we didn't know what to expect, didn't know how it would go. So, you know, we were, you know, conservative in our budgeting and setting up the original first year. Didn't know what we would need. How fast would we go through those crayons with the kids after school? How many specialists would we need to bring in for clubs and activities? Because we knew we definitely wanted to do something different. So we set some financial targets to like, all right, let's give ourselves a cushion so we could use that to spring in and help reduce rates years or add to the program. So this first year of having this happen kind of set us back a little bit on that. But it also gave us, gave Kristin and Erin a tremendous opportunity for professional development with her first, full-time staff. And we really just, you know, wanted to take that economic impact into account and hold those rates at, at 2%. So overall, want to take a look at the financials that were at the end of June 30th, what's happening. So they had a beginning balance because as, you know, we did this journey across two fiscal years for our accounting purposes. So as kids were registering for this first year in 1920, parents were actually paying ahead in spring of the 18, 19 school year. So we had that, plus then everything that came in, minus, we didn't really start spending anything, though, until the first year. We ended to the good of $21,000. So we pretty much broke even on a million-dollar industry that we were running. $21,000 is, you know, is right there. We would have liked to seen that a little bit better, to kind of reinvest into the program and, and do some more things, you know, in those years when it's a little bit healthier, we could hold the rates down, or we could reward our staff members with maybe, because we do mirror private a little bit more, their rates are, are based on job performance versus a contract. Or we could do more field trips or do a few more things. So I just want to give you a high, you know, the high-level perspective of how the financials of this program, remember, it's money in and money out. The district does not subsidize this at all. We legally cannot subsidize it at all. And that every expense they have is funded through the, the tuition revenues from, from parents. Okay? Any questions on, on the finance, the quick financials there? All righty.
Um, okay, so these are now our current enrollment numbers for next year. So you'll see over to the left, the, the difference between the two. So 54 new kids this year. And what's so exciting about this that Kristin and I get so jazzed up about is, is that, you know, in the midst of all of the COVID and the unknowns, parents still want to come here, right? Like, so they're, they're, they're excited about what we produced last year and are excited to get back in. So it's really exciting to see these numbers. You'll see, too, that the morning numbers are a tad bit higher. That's typically because people wait, they register just in case their school bus or what have you, you know, doesn't get there in time for them to get to work. So definitely excited about those new numbers, 54 new kids. So with that, what's, what's great is we offered to the, anybody who was currently in Wonder Care, they had a week ahead of the, the general public to be able to come in and register to be guaranteed their spot. So we also then guaranteed their siblings as well. So 54 new kids, a lot of those are actual incoming kindergarten as well. So just excited that families wanted to welcome us back. And then this is just our pricing structure. It kind of goes in, again, we have, you'll see in the darker gray, we do offer a discounted rate for that 4:00 PM pickup, something unique that we do do as well. And then you'll see our sibling discount is also very, very nice for, for children with two or more. They do get an 8% discount, so something really great. We're proud of this pricing structure, for sure.
So these prices here, these are for a week?
Oh, sorry, no, that, good question. That is for the month.
For a month.
For a month, yep. And so what we do is we break it into 10 equal payments. So even though maybe December, the year is that December has two weeks of vacation because of the, the winter holiday, the December, December break, but then maybe March only has one day, you're paying the same. So we just divided the total number of days that they would be at Wonder Care and divided that by 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're going to just show you kind of a little bit, take you through a minute and a half experience, some of the photos and get to see what some of the kids have done. Paul was gracious enough to put together a little slideshow with some of the pictures that Erin and Kristin have gotten throughout the, throughout the year. So we're going to give this a whirl. It worked earlier today, so.
Oh, good.
So one of my favorite takeaways of this is, you know, being, you know, my son asked, why can't I go to Wonder Care? Because a lot of his friends were in it. I told mom, "I already have enough time off."
Whatever, well.
Yeah, exactly.
It did. I was in the doghouse for a couple of days when he repeated that tour. But it was great just to see kids from 2:30 to 6:00 interacting in person. Because, you know, just watching as my son's grown and some of the kids in the neighborhood, you know, they get off the bus and they meet, you know, they don't play outside as much anymore. It seems like they run inside to go for the electronics and the games. And to me, every time I visited, the most striking thing was these kids are getting that experience to be together in a different environment, and it was nothing but positive from every, every visit I made to the sites throughout the year. So I just want me, I thought that was one of the kind of subliminal, huge bonuses this program did for our kids that were a part of it.
No, I was always glad, too. I thought it was so nice for the kids not to have to rush off to a different location, to be able to stay in their home school, maybe receive help with homework if they needed it, but just that, that continuity. So Kristin and Erin, thank you so much for everything you've done. And I'm glad that you feel and have seen these positive things happen to reinforce all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for everything.
And you bring, you do bring up an interesting point, too, because that was one of the early questions we got from a lot of administrators and staff members, like, wow, that's such a long day for these kids that are six to six, because they're seeing it now. But they didn't see it before because the kid got on a bus and was driven.
Right.
To a site, or came from a drop-off site at six. So, you know, we, that, that's an important part that got missed, that they don't have to have that transition again.
Right. Does anybody have anything else they want to ask or share with Kristin and Erin?
Can I make a comment and a quick question? So the comment is first, thank you, Kristin and Erin, for also continuing with our value of educating the whole child, and the social interactions you bring are outstanding. It's good not to have them going right to electronics, but.
Right.
With one another, so thank you. The question I have is, do you have to have a COVID-19 plan when you reopen in the fall? Or karma, is that covered under the school reopening?
It's covered under the school reopening.
Okay.
They would have to follow the same guidelines we do because they're targeted under the, the school district.
Okay, great, thank you.
You may be thinking of activities that have more social distance in them and.
Yeah. Fortunately, but, you know, we've been thinking about it a lot.
Yeah.
What that's going to look like for kids, but.
There, there'd be nuances that would be different probably than what we're doing throughout the day because it is a smaller population and, you know, could restrict it in different, different ways.
Right.
Are all the sites doing pretty much the same thing since you oversee it? Activities and things like that, are they independent?
It's, it's definitely not, everybody's making paper chains and everybody's playing kickball, but it's a variety of a lot of the same things. And what's, what's great about, and when Kristin was talking about it, that we have those seven full-time coordinators is, is that there's that ability for them all to share and brainstorm, and it's like watching Think Tank. Like, they just, oh, that's a great idea, can I have that lesson plan? Or, oh, I've never thought about that. And so it, it really does, so they do kind of play off of each other and borrow ideas for each site, but it's definitely not cookie cutter as the same schedule, but it's definitely cookie cutter as far as different ideas and things that they have.
And do they get an opportunity to meet together or?
Yeah, every day, the seven full-time coordinators will see each other, yep.
Oh, good.
You guys have done a phenomenal job. The, um, the word on the street, too, parents are really happy with it, so.
Yes, my children are also there, and it's, I'm not allowed to pick them up until 5:30, so. Sometimes you want to go home, though. I'm just kidding.
Yes.
They're very happy there, too, so.
Good. My grandchildren were there last year.
Oh, yeah, Logan and Sienna?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other question? I think so. Thank you so much for joining us and sharing all this. We appreciate it very much.
Good luck with your second year.
Thanks, bye.
Thanks.
Okay.
And they didn't even act like they had been under fire for the first year. What a first year for them with the closing and pandemic and everything else, and they're smiling.
Yeah, they're great. They're, they are, you know, I can't toot their horns loud enough of how successful the two of them have made this first year for the program. And just the retention rate, I don't think we lost a single person, a single family.
Yeah, great.
That did not re-register that had kids eligible.
Ryan, are they covered by the district insurance, or do they have to have their own?
They're covered under our district liability and people accident insurance.
That's good.
We weren't required, I approached both of them when we were starting this. We weren't required to do anything different with our insurance companies to start the program.
That's great.
Okay. Yeah, that was just for information, so moving on, food service donation acceptance, right? Walk us through that.
Sure. We received a very generous donation from Peter and Melanie Wells, a family out of Clem North that just wanted to do something great for the community. And so they reached out to us and they donated a large sum to eliminate outstanding student balances owed to the, the school lunch program. So I was in contact with them and, you know, thanked them profusely, and so did Mark Belfour and Laura Blue, since it was started from a Clem North family, was in on the original communications. So their generosity, they just hope to inspire people, and hopefully, it, it does it to do more on the community level, and wanted to make sure, got that message out. That's, that was their, their main cause during what is a downtime to try to inspire more people.
That was fantastic.
You do, it's amazing. Then can we have a motion, please, to accept that generous donation on behalf of the Wells family?
I'll make that motion, or second, whatever.
Second, by two. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item of business is taken care of. Moving on to the Bosse's transportation contract.
Next up, we do outsource every year to Monroe One Bosse's, some students with disabilities, transportation services. It's about 50 students, plus or minus, depending on what they have the ability to do. You know, program fluctuations, change that. What we're able to do internally, too, we always try to staff with, with our transportation first. And we have been successful with that to a certain extent, but everybody's up against the same driver shortage. So we still maintain this contract with Monroe One Bosse's. You see it there attached, it's. You see it there attached, it's, since it's a large contract, it's kind of separate from our normal Bosse's billing. Always want the board to approve that before we send it on to the state. We actually get transportation aid on this contract and not Bosse's aid on the way the state rules work, even though it is with Bosse's.
Brian, when we see this in our budget though, do we see it under transportation or do we see it under Bosse's?
We see it under the transportation budget.
Okay, but when they do our calculations for cost per pupil, gen ed versus special ed, is this contained?
No, transportation gets, on the state report card, the transportation expenses usually are taken out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Is transportation aid more than Bosse's aid?
Depends on what the item is, but this is required, even though it's through Bosse's, required to go to transport, as a transportation expense in transportation. You know, we do, for instance, our software, not to digress real quick, we have bus monitoring software, we buy it through Bosse's. And I've done the calculation, we actually get a higher aid rate through Bosse's. So we keep that expense through Bosse's and technology versus transportation.
So you're always looking at that, whatever we can do?
Yep.
Right. Because $12,000 a student is a lot for transportation. If you look, take 50 into 600,000.
Yeah, a lot of it is the one-to-one monitors, one-to-one transportation.
Right, okay.
Sometimes two-to-one, there might be two monitors on the bus for one kid. And they are usually long haul to difficult placements.
Yeah. And the, and the aides on the buses would be Bosse's employees?
Yep, yep, all Bosse's employees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And can we have a motion, please, to accept the Bosse's transportation contract?
So moved.
Sue, second by Maria. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the internal audit and corrective action plan.
Yeah, we just had the pleasure of reviewing this with the second best committee, the audit committee.
It's the best committee.
Sorry, Mike.
And so our internal auditors, what they really focused on when we sat down with them last fall, before we were going to kick this off in the winter, was all around cybersecurity, user access around some of our major systems. So the report you see that went through the audit committee is really focusing in on those technology systems, financial and human resource systems, things we could do better. One of the main takeaways though, is that unfortunately not all the stuff we wanted to look at and test was able to get done because of the COVID pandemic. Working, there's things that they just couldn't do remotely as far as testing the technology, as far as, you know, wanting to look at our processes around hardware tracking, fixed asset tracking, some of those things we just could not get to because they needed to be here in person. So, you know, just a few things to look at is, it's all around education and being aware is a lot of the things that came out of this for staff, which we always started the ball rolling with our tech team on trainings, things that we already have to kind of do to comply with the ED Law 2D that's coming up. So some more training modules, some additional training, always being aware and moving forward. Just having that mindset that if you're in a high contact area with financials and HR and our tech stuff of, you know, everybody's trying to get at your stuff. And if you have that mindset, it'll help you when you're sitting at your computer terminal working on stuff and checking your emails. So.
How long did it take to complete this audit?
Oh, they probably put a few hundred hours worth of effort from their perspective, and they interviewed all of the business office staff for the most part, worked with Brian Zimmer and Joe Montemello and the tech staff, several interviews, several in-person meetings as well. So we probably had about two to three days worth of our time in the prep and planning and, and looking at it, I'd say overall, but their hours were probably in several hundred and to execute it.
It is an extensive process. Does anybody have anything else they want to speak to? Thank you for leading this work, and to Brian and Joe as well, for their participation in your business office. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the internal audit and corrective action plan?
I'm moved.
Linda, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who carries? Moving on to the Northwest Savings Bank tax search area.
Yep, so Northwest Savings Bank located in Penfield, right on the corner of Empire and Plank, at the top of the hill, had for two years, 18, 19, 19, 20, put a taxer challenge against the town and the school district. You see that the, what the property was assessed at, what they were looking to reduce it to. So our potential refunds were about 32,000. Under the settlement agreement, they've reduced the overall assessment, and they'll discontinue their proceedings and waive those refunds. So we're going to owe no refunds on this tax search area case, reduces a multi-year liability, and we're cutting off the attorney's fees as we speak on this one, because it'll be done. So it's our recommendation to accept this and move forward with this agreement.
Okay, any questions or feedback from anyone? Thank you for all the work behind this as well. I know, can we have a motion, please, to accept the tax search area agreement?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second by Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. On to school lunch funds transfer.
So this is, this is new, this is something different this year. In my six years, I've never had to ask the board to do this, but this is a unique year. It's not uncommon, many districts already do this as part of their budgeting practice, but this is what we're trying to avoid with the food service presentation we had in May. So we, we gave you a projected of what we think our total loss would be. We won't have that finalized until the summertime, because some, you know, the huge part of the fund balance for food service is also the commodities, and our auditors come in and they put a dollar value to those commodities, and that will either increase or decrease our, our fund balance based on what's there. Even though it's not real tangible dollars, there's, there's a dollar value to that that works with our school lunch fund balance. So we'll, we'll probably in July, early August, before the tax warrant, have a final number. And we also know that the state is at least three months behind on the current program we're running for the claims we're submitting. So just at the end of May, we, we received our February claims. So March, April, May, June, for the program we're running at Trader, we don't know exactly, we have an estimate, but we don't know exactly how that revenue will impact us in totality as well. So I put in there an amount not to exceed. We will have a final number, but we will not exceed a half a million dollars. We're hopeful by the time everything settles in, it'll be closer to maybe even less than the 320 we projected when we did the financial overview in May. So we just want to err on the side of caution a little bit to not to exceed $500,000. Hopeful that it'll come in much lower than that to kind of make the, the program whole for the losses sustained with the closure. And always hopeful that maybe something from USDA, federal, will come and assist school lunch programs across the country that also experienced the same exact thing as us.
Is that something that's being talked about as a possibility?
I know it's been brought up. I know a lot of our contacts at ASBO and Monroe County School Boards, I talked to Joe Morelli and people at the state level, and that it's on people's radar, so we shall see.
And are all school districts experiencing this problem due to the shutdown?
For the most part, yes. Some are in a better position because some of our neighboring districts already subsidize their program. So they're already transferring every year. They have a budget line in the general fund that voters approve, you know, a $180,000 transfer to school lunch that they've just, they just send over there no matter what. So many are subsidizing it already, so the loss isn't hitting them as bad. You know, some are, some with high free and reduce, make money, make a significant amount of money for their school lunch program that do summer feedings, things like that. So, you know, we're a little bit, we're, we're not there, so we have those sustained losses. We don't, that some other districts don't have.
I didn't even realize we could subsidize the food lunch program. I thought it was separate.
It is intended to, but as long as the board authorizes this resolution, and then if it becomes, and that's in essence what we're trying to avoid with moving the school, the two high schools out, is me having to ask the board and the voters to approve that kind of transfer as part of the budget.
So how much of this, 320,000 was from the fact that we were providing lunches during the pandemic?
This was, that is all just missed sales, for the most part.
Okay, so it's just missed sales?
Missed sales. I mean, the pandemic, our high number was before, was 2,000, right before Good Friday was our highest number for lunch. We're, I know, even on a bad normal day, we're around 4,000 meals on a daily basis, so.
Okay, all right.
So Brian, going for getting out of the USDA program for our high school students help us, that was part of your presentation, right?
Yep.
Good. So we got a plan.
We do.
We go, yes. Any other discussion around the school lunch transfer? Can we have a motion, please, to accept the school lunch funds transfer?
So moved.
And Mike, second. Second by Linda, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. The estimated reserve transfer.
So this is, this is, every year we do this, looking at the school year closing, looking at our reserves with estimated transfers not to exceed. This is always the best case scenario of maybe what we can do of areas that our auditors during the preliminary audit had the conversation of what we want to look at too for financial planning. So these are the amounts we're looking at. Number six on the list, the Bosse's Capital Project Fund, I have a, we'll talk about that in a little bit greater detail for refresher. But these are pretty much half of the reserves we have, but they're the ones that are most useful to us. Capital reserve is always a, a spot we want to look to add for unadable future costs. Tax search area, you see, I think we've had two cases in the last two board meetings I've brought to. Those are not going to go away, as long as our equalization rates keep changing. More and more companies are going to take advantage of that, I believe. So to add some estimated there, our workers' comp claims as well, add funds there. Liability reserve, we're seeing a lot more things that are falling in the cracks between what insurance covers and what they don't, especially around students and liability for placements. TRS wanted, since we were able to do that last year, build up that balance to something that's reasonable. And then the Bosse's Capital Project Fund. And then I just added for you, how many are total reserves, what we have. You see, some I'm not projecting to add funds into, but what the balance was on June 1st for your reference as well, looking forward. We'll have final end of the year audited transfers in August, once the auditors are done closing, are helping us close the books. So this is just the estimate before June 30th, you'll have final numbers in August, the same night we do the tax warrant.
Well done, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll look forward to seeing the final numbers in August. And that requires action as well. Can we have a motion to, a motion to extend acceptance for the estimated reserve transfer?
I'm moved.
Second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And last in our new board business, Bosse's Capital Project Funding.
So this is just the Monroe One Capital Project. As we talked about this, just as a refresher, you know, we're the largest component in Monroe One. I reminded, we have the three payments coming up, the first one's due July 15th of next month. And we really had three fiscal years to set aside money to pay our local share. So we make the first payment next July, we get the aid back in the same year, we use that, plus what we set aside to help make the second payment, aid plus what we set aside makes the third payment. It's a cyclical process. So we set aside last, at the end of last year, 500,000. And so this year, we're going to do the same exact 500,000 to, to bring it up to a million, and then one more year, 428,000 next June gets us the final amount to make our three payments with no budgetary increases, we're just using surplus funds to do this, which the other nine districts besides ourself have all agreed to two years ago. Well, little, but, yeah, just about two years ago, it feels like now, so. Any questions on that? I just wanted to refresh when you see that transfer of why, where it's coming from and why it's going.
Okay, barring any discussion, can we have a motion, please, to accept the Bosse's Capital Project Funding update? By Jan, second. By Sue, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian, for all of this.
No problem.
This work, all of this information. Moving on to old business, we have the second reading of the new policy around data security and privacy. Sue?
I know.
Policy board.
I believe that it was either Dave or Brian who presented this at the last meeting, and I wasn't here. But this is a new, new policy that's required, and it pretty much has to say exactly what it says, and we'll be assigning a number to it upon approval of this reading, and I don't believe that there was any changes
No.
during the first reading. So if, if we all agree, then it will become policy and be inserted in our policy manual. Anybody have any questions?
It's fairly straightforward and definitely, right. Okay, can we have a motion to accept the second reading of the new policy data security and privacy?
So moved.
Maria, and a second.
Second.
By Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And finally, we have the consent agenda, which everyone's had a chance to review, all the items therein. And can we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Linda, second.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Mike, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, finally, I'd just like to say a public thank you to everybody and all the work around bringing to bringing to close a very challenging and difficult year. Certainly nothing anyone could have imagined or foreseen. And so many people would have gone beyond for the sake of our kids and community, day in, day out. So heartfelt thank you on behalf of all of us. And also, we look forward to the participating in the advisory groups over the course of the summer as we hopefully have an uneventful return in the fall. So, okay. With that, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sue. Thank you. Second?
Second.
By Maria. Have a nice rest of the evening, everyone.
Thank you.
You too. Bye.
Bye.
Everybody.